We're gonna go ahead and call this public meeting to order. Of course, we're gonna take some breaks in between so that we can accommodate for folks taking advantage of the Richwood Parade here tonight. Of course, we're here at the Summer, uh, Richwood City Hall is 6:06 PM. A few notes before we begin. The purpose of this hearing, of course, is alongside the other tomorrow night so that all citizens of Nicholas County can express their views to the Nicholas County Commission with their views, opinions, concerns, and other items about redistricting of the magisterial districts. We are eager to hear your ideas, proposals, and concerns, and county citizens are invited and encouraged to share their opinions here tonight and with the maps provided in shaping the magisterial districts here in Nicholas County. We are working with WVU's GIS department to ensure accurate and fair numbers concerning the precincts so that we can build accurate and fair magisterial districts from them. Of course, all other counties are pretty much using WVU GIS too, so we are slow in getting turnaround on our maps, and so this is why we provided the maps, as you see here, for the community's input. Of course, we are providing these maps to everyone that comes here tonight and for tomorrow night. We had to edit the, we have a, these were the proposed precinct changes due to the way that the House of Delegates redistrict for the delegate districts. It actually broke up some of our precincts that Clerk Painter had to work on evening them out, making them appropriate for the House districts, and then, so, that's why some of the numbers may look different, there's a new precinct, et cetera. And then on the back page are just a few proposals so far, the original. Strike the second one. The bottom one is a proposal from Commissioner Atkins, and the third one there is one from Anything you want to add on the precinct edits?
No, you covered everyone. Anybody else? We added one precinct. We took one precinct to make two because delegate line went right through the middle. We moved a few people, a couple hundred, one precinct to the other.
I'm sorry, could you speak louder?
I'll try. We took Precinct 30, which is Levesey, the new delegate line went right through the middle of that precinct, so we had to make two precincts. They'll still vote in the same building, they'll just, there'll be different ballots, different poll workers, different. And then around precinct between 28 and 3, we moved people out of 28 into 3 because that delegate line went around those two precincts. And then if you're going up, 17's not listed on the map, but 16 and 17, the precinct right beside it, those were just reshaped. They already vote in the same building, it's, they'll still vote in the same building, it'll still be two precincts, it's just what precinct those people are in may have changed. So we tried to make as few changes as possible, but any change we've made so far is based on where the house of delegates line changes.
At this point, we haven't got any numbers. Of course, I've got to.
Thank you, sir. We will be using county commission procedures to govern this hearing when it comes to, in our public comment period, commissioners are not required, they are able, but they are not required to respond to questions or comments, and that no personal attacks, allegations, or threats will be tolerated. Each presenter shall be given three minutes to present their views, opinions, and concerns. When the alarm sounds, which me or Clerk Painter will want, will have the timer, that will signify it is time just to wrap up your comments, conclude your presentation, and then when you come up, if you don't mind, just please state your name and where you live at the beginning of your presentation. And so that being said, whoever would like to begin, the Thor is, is your right.
All right, I can just, we can start with Adam Lewis. And for those people that don't want to speak but would like to, to have a public comment, just use the back of your sheet there and put that in, okay? For a public comment if you don't want to speak, okay?
And all maps returned to the commission will be made a part of the record, so we'll get that back in, that will actually be part of the record for the special meeting we're having here tonight.
First on the list, we have Gary Roberts.
Okay. Yeah, the information process.
Okay, that's fine. Second on the list, we have Roy Moose. Okay, Roy doesn't want to speak, he just came to say. John?
Huh?
You're third on the list.
What's that?
You're third on the list if you want to speak.
I can't hear her.
Okay, yeah, you can come up here and speak.
What's that?
I said, you're third on the list if you want to speak, okay?
Well, I don't want to speak, but I like, I like your bottom plan here on this here. On the second page, I'll get along with that real well.
Okay.
And I think you've got to be there to get people, wherever you at, they're all citizens. I was telling Lloyd, back in the politics, I was appointed clerk for two years, and I, first week I went straight to the courthouse, second week said, you know, I've got to get elected, you know, and meet some people, so I stopped at some old Jackson eat, a couple people told me, told me that I wouldn't go get to be clerk, and I said, yes, I will, I'm, I'm working out, I'm going to go get to be clerk. They said, forty-three people, it's a platform, you won't get it. I said, well, so I walked in, and the Stonewall, I got cold, cold feet, but then the people just, you know, how you feel when you've gone wrong, okay? There's some business people in there. I said, well, they're not supporting me, I don't tell you that right now, so I started going to the Harries downtown there, and I got in with it real good, and got in with a power, Republican, strong Republican, probably the strongest one over there, he was a lawyer. He came up for an election, he gave me a thousand dollars, so I worked with the people, I worked every, I've probably passed the House of Nicholas County over the sixteen years, so I thank you for letting me talk.
Thank you, sir.
All right, next up, we have Patricia, Pat Coughlin.
I was just looking at the tally that you had on the sheet and trying to see if it would represent everybody the best, and I did feel that you, one on the bottom probably debited up evenly across the counter to be fair to everybody. That was the one.
All right, thank you.
That's, that's the way it used to be, isn't that correct?
Yeah. Ten years ago. Next up, we have Barb Taylor. Barb, why don't you, you guys come up so we can get you on TV and we can hear you better too also.
Yeah. Not really like those. Having just gotten the information when I came in, I really don't, I can't speak intelligently, but I can speak from my heart. It seems like if we look at functioning, it seems like it should be Richwood, Thenwick Mountain, Craigsville, those areas in Cherry District, because those kids go to school together, we shop in the same area, we have a lot of cohesion in our activities. And as it is now with Birch River being in Cherry, if I were, if someone in Birch River, I would not want somebody from Richwood making decisions on taxes, information, spending in the county. I know that you all have a lot of clout in what happens in the county. It seems like Birch River would be better placed in Somersville in Birch District because they would be more cohesive with them than with Gully if we have Canvas, Nettie Levesey, Mount Lookout, Mount Nevo, all of those are together. I don't know what that would do to the numbers because I'm having trouble reading this map since there's no markers on the map and I have to go by history, and I did grow up in Nicholas County and have Nicholas County eighth grade West Virginia history. I had Mineral County. Now, give me a map of Mineral County, I can tell you, but not Nicholas, although I've been here almost fifty years, so I should have learned by now. But it just seems like we went wrong when we changed it and put Gully into Cherry and put Birch into, or put, yeah, put Gully into Richwood and Birch River into Cherry.
Let's see, who do we have next? Michael Moore.
Yeah, so I'm a little confused on these numbers myself. I was a little late, sorry.
What?
Uh, I would like to have a precinct map so I could actually tell what.
That's what the first map is.
Okay.
On the first page.
Okay.
It's, from everyone, like, I'm aware of one council person here in Richwood, from everyone that I've talked to since y'all made this announcement, everyone in my ward that I've touched base with would like to go back to as close to what previously as ten years was before it got changed. So, I mean, like I said, I've just, I've been here for maybe ten minutes, I haven't got to really look this over, but that's what everybody from where I'm representing is wanting, is to go back to what we had prior to ten years ago. So if y'all can get close to that, that would be greatly appreciated. Appreciate you coming up to Richwood and doing this.
Thank you.
You notice one of the sheet that we have carved would lend some semblance to this, which is basically this, on what's current and what isn't. I know, they, they don't understand the numbers itself, and it's hard to.
He went to get that card to you, but you make copies, you make copies of that.
Of that, because that puts everything together where they can see it.
Right.
What, what the district numbers are, like this, or they don't know what that is on the map, okay? That lets you, lets you see it and put the name of it. That'll make a lot, okay?
This whole around here.
I thought so, too.
Genifies what is ten each.
Where's the thermostat?
Magisterial district.
We'll go ahead and take a break, save us some time.
Okay, our next question will be to this table.
Okay, we're gonna get back to some more of the public hearing here. Up next, we have Mrs. Denise Taylor, who'd like to come up and vote. And again, just for the benefit of the folks who came in, we're following the county commission's procedures that commissioners are not required but are able to respond to any questions, comments, no personal attacks, allegations, or threats of course. Each presenter gets three minutes to express their views, opinions, and concerns. When the alarm sounds, that will signify it's just time for you to wrap up your presentation, if you don't mind, and we'll get on to the next, and if you don't mind, state your name and where you live at the beginning of your presentation.
I don't need three minutes.
Okay.
Denise Taylor, and I'm from Thenwick Mountain, and I did finally figure out the map and the precincts here, so I do like the option of, the last option there that moves Birch River over to the Birch District and then moves Cherry into the Cherry District, so it kind of keeps all of Richwood as one to have one representative, and then Birch River, I think their representative would be better served to represent that end of the county as well. And I think the numbers are there pretty close together. It looks like that's even the amount it would be compared to where they are now with the numbers, so that's all I have, thanks.
Thank you.
And thank you guys for coming.
Okay. Next up, we have Jordan.
Do you want that?
Huh? Okay, Jordan, Jordan Dietz, you're next.
I'm giving you commissioners, and thank you for giving me this opportunity to speak. My name is Jordan Dietz, I am from Richwood. I'm a member of city council and currently assigned to active duty with United States Coast Guard. According to the West Virginia Constitution, districts are required to be contiguous, compact, and do our best to not split political subdivisions. The state recently enacted a congressional district map due to a total loss of roughly sixty thousand residents, according to the most recent census. Nicholas County has suffered a loss of nearly eighteen hundred residents, and this map should be redrawn to reflect our population shift. West Virginia Code, Chapter Seven, Article Two states the following with respect to redistricting: "Each county shall be laid off by the county court in two as nearly equal as can be in territory and population," circling back to the state's constitution of contiguous and compact. "The districts must be similar in population and size, and legally no more than ten percent difference from the population of the largest district to the smallest." Currently, our total difference in population from smallest to largest is a total of thirteen percent. This lies outside of the federal threshold of ten percent. Birch River and Richwood are in the same district. This is not contiguous according to West Virginia Code. Based on these two pieces of evidence alone, one could deduce this current layout resembles gerrymandering. Regardless of the methods of the current design, the numbers in the law demand for change. Fortunately, we do not have to reinvent the wheel. We can go back to the way the map was originally designed, based on economy, political views, and logical boundaries. For example, the example on page two at the very bottom, precinct fourteen moves from Cherry to Birch, twenty-three, twenty-five, and thirty-one move from Birch to Gully, and eight moves from Gully to Cherry. You can see the totals at the bottom. The percent difference from largest to smallest is roughly two percent, well below the ten percent required by law. Boundaries are contiguous, compact, and political subdivisions remain with their respective communities. Representation is fair and equal for each community to be represented legally and effectively. Each person's vote should count, that is democracy. With this proposed map, voters will be able to choose their representatives, not the other way around. I appreciate your time listening, thank you.
Next up, we have Gary Johnson.
As you know, I'm the mayor of Richwood, and I just wanted to say a word about functional representation. As we were talking during the break, the, including Birch River and Cherry District, we've done for ten years ago. I've been around for office since nineteen-eight, it's the first time I've been around, so I've run since nineteen-eight to what it was, twenty-sixteen was, successfully most of the time in my office. But anyway, the, and as you know, we have had a terrible division in this county, and the reason that we have is because we didn't feel like we were being properly represented on this end. Our children who go to Cherry District schools, every one of them are, are, you know, they're represented from Birch River, these children go to different schools. So it was a matter of functional representation, and I was gonna ask, what's the difference between proposal one and the last proposal on the papers that I have? Population, all.
The one at the very top. The one at the top is the current.
Yeah, is the current one.
Current.
The most recent census numbers.
Oh, with the most recent census numbers plugged in.
Yes.
So the last one is the really, the two percent deviation is the, is the best deviation, and that also, as Jordan said, and we were talking about this today, takes care of all the compactness issues. I spoke with someone in Secretary of State's office today, and they told me that those, they applied to legislative districts, but they also applied to, to redistricting magisterial districts, the three contiguous, whatever the word is. So anyway, I think that would go a long way if we just had a two percent deviation and people are in the district in which they represent the people, that district, go a long way towards doing everything and getting everything back on track. As I said, since I've been involved in politics, the old system where thirty-nine was in, in which Birch and, or, I'm sorry, in with Gully, and it came back around through Mount Nevo, Mount Lookout, and over to Nettie Levesey, and then, or parts, you know, through Hominy Falls, and then Birch District, Birch River, it's actually Birch District named after Birch River, so that's, it was always part of that district, and I'm sure there was a political reason why it was moved, and I, I think it was good for us for forty or fifty years, and going back to that with a two percent deviation is, in my opinion. So I just wanted to express that.
Thank you. Okay, there's new people coming in, so we need to, probably, it's a point in time having to come up and sign, because I'm not sure who are.
Okay, everybody that came in, as the mayor began to speak there, if you wouldn't mind to come up and sign the signing sheet, and then we can go through the additional presentations.
I do have one more presentation that has already signed, and that is.
Can I say one thing, just one thing? As I was looking at these numbers, if even if you took Cherry District and just moved precinct fourteen over to Gully District, that would make Gully District still smaller than Cherry District, population, the eighty-eight would come down and, and Gully District would go from seven to one plus twelve, which would be eighty-seven. So even if you just did that small change, it would even up the districts more, and, you know, as it stands now, Cherry District is underrepresented with eighty-eight hundred people, so, that's always figures, I'm not sure if I can handle that.
We also need to get on some of these.
Yeah, we need to get one of each of those.
Yeah. For those people that are coming in and signing up, we've got a couple sheets of paper for you also. That does explain, so I can just look at, okay? So come back, okay? Let's just get another sheet, we'll start over, this is filled up. Okay. Okay, this side. Okay, your hand is out of there. Okay, so we've got some more people who pick up. Okay. We're gonna give you a couple more, so now, I don't know if this. Make sure we got that extra set. I don't even like, I don't even like. Marcia, the nine.
Yeah.
We don't want to speak, we're going to be quiet. Yeah? Yeah. Okay. Yeah, we're gonna do, probably get some meetings. Yeah, Jimmy? Jimmy Gladwell?
My name's Jimmy Gladwell, I live here in Richwood, live here on my life, I'm the city reporter, right down under there, and, you know, if you live in Richwood all your life, you know, you've been in the Cherry, Cherry District all that time, so they, ten years ago, until they changed the district. Right now, I live, I live in Richwood and I'm in the Gully District. And that doesn't make any sense, doesn't make any sense at all, if you look at the Gully District, Cherry River Elementary down that way, you know, and then you're in with Lockwood, Nettie, Canvas, Levesey, Kessler, Paulsley, Mount Lookout, and Mount Nevo. I mean, if you look at the common sense part of it, there's no sense to it, so I propose that we move the Gully District that's in Richwood, where I live at, back into the Cherry District. That's where it needs to be, and that's where it should be. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I'll go ahead and call some names there, yeah, and just, you can say what you want to speak, okay? Mike and Marcia, Hannah? No, yes?
What was it?
Do you want to speak?
We're not speaking.
Okay. Dean Smallwood?
We're writing.
Okay.
We're writing with Kelly Pinn.
Ellen Johnson? Do you want to speak, or you just went away? Whatever. Okay, Rita Perry?
I don't know.
Pardon?
Yes.
No. Pammy Brown? I mean, your dad's going fishing. Oh, yeah. Okay. Okay. Yeah, we're gonna probably get some. Yeah, Jimmy? Jimmy Gladwell?
Thank you. My name's Jimmy Gladwell. I live here in Richwood, live here all my life. I'm the city reporter right now, over here. And, you know, if you live in Richwood all your life, you know, you've been in the Cherry District all that time until they, 10 years ago, until they changed the district. Right now, I live in Richwood, and I'm in the Gully District. And that doesn't make any sense. Doesn't make any sense at all. If you look at the Gully District, Cherry River Elementary down that way, you know, and then you're in with Lockwood, Nettie, Campus, Levese, Kessler, Paulsley, Mount Lookout, and Mount Nebo. I mean, if you look at the common sense part of it, there's no sense to it. I propose that we move Gully District that's in Richwood, where I live at, back into Cherry District. That's where it needs to be, and that's where it should be. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, I'll go ahead and call some names there. Yeah, you can say what you want to speak on, okay? Mike and Marcia? Hannah? No? Yes?
What is it?
Do you want to speak?
We're not speaking.
Okay. Me and Smallwood?
We are writing.
Okay. Okay.
We're writing with Kelly Pines.
Okay. Ellen Johnson? Do you want to speak, or you just went right? Whatever. Okay. Rita Perry? Pardon? No. Tammy Brown? Okay.
I have a question for you guys. It's not something that... Of course, I want Cherry River back. And Craig, you know, Richwood kind of put you in this position. We voted for you, and we were big time voting for you, and we'd like for you to, to respect our wishes. I think all of us here want to be, want to have Cherry River back here and...
We don't want it to be divided.
And we don't want to be divided any longer.
No.
And it doesn't have anything to do with, with what's going on currently with schools. It's going to help us, and I think it's going to help Summersville. It's going to balance things out. It's going to be equitable. And I'd like to see you make this change for us, if you would. Okay?
Okay. Next up, we have Diane White.
No, sir.
Okay. Lillian?
No.
Sharon Chapman? Sharon? Okay. Mary Cooper?
No.
Anna Marie Rager?
I thought that was Simon.
You want to speak?
No. I feel the same way as Ms. Grant.
Okay.
She said it very well.
All right. Deborah Bailey?
No.
Okay. That has us up to speed, unless we've had more coming in. We had more coming in?
More.
If you've recently come in, would you come in, come up and sign again? Done? All right. Over the last year, hopefully.
I understand. I'm just trying to understand it too.
There is, it's a lot to understand. Once you give the gift, the tail will go. Go ahead.
Can I keep this?
Yes, that's yours.
Yeah.
Can I have another one for you?
All right. Yes. You want to do a public talk, you need to be right on the back. All these points are there.
Everything's submitted back, and you can throw it in the public right.
All right. Would you get our questions? Okay? Okay. All right.
Hi, what?
Okay.
Boy, can I speak? May I speak?
Yeah, you need to come up and sign it. Okay. Okay.
This is my podium, right?
Yes, sir.
Thanks for coming to town, guys. Appreciate it. Appreciate y'all being here, and of course, you can see that we're, we're very adamant in keeping our Cherry District, in the Cherry District. Looking at this page here, I'm very much in support of this fourth phase. And I think, I think if you go look around this room, you'll see a lot of people who are in agreement with that. I think that's our best setup for our community in this, in our county. And basically, in a nutshell, that's all I want to say. Okay? Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Good evening, commissioners. Thank you so much for the time you've given us here to come and express our opinions to you. I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm Sharon Pluskoff. I know each one of them, sir. And I live actually in Hockum. I have a business here in Richwood, and I'm proud, proud to be a Nicholas County resident. And I think that's my biggest concern with this issue, is we've been so divided in this county for a long time. And we're missing our strengths by not including each part of the county as a strong team. So I think it's fair to take an overview of where people live and give them at least a representative from their area, or an opportunity for a representative from their area that they live in, that they can connect with. And I think we can take this down to like each of our families. When, you know, you have a decision to make, you don't want a stranger making it for you. You want somebody that can relate to you, understand what you're going through. And in essence, that makes you a lot stronger, and that would make us a lot stronger county. I think we would all feel more united. And right now, there are folks that drive to other counties to do shopping and things because we're so divided. And that's nonsense. We shouldn't be that way. We should be building strength on each other. And I believe with the bottom proposal here, where it says to move Birch out of the Cherry District and put them in, you know, to sort through this on option four, to where people who are connected more locally can, can have representation. And I feel like the citizens of Nicholas County would feel like they have a part. We don't ever want to get to the, to the time where we don't think our, our vote counts. We want to be strong. And when we have more people voting, that indicates how a county feels. But we have to have representation from the whole county. And so anyways, I think, I think going back to closest to what the original setup was, where we're more connected with people on our local, is, is what is important to me. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Tom? Would you like to speak?
Yes. Tom Lankinship, if you don't know me. I was on county commission at the time that we changed that, put Birch River into Cherry and Cherry into Gully. And the reason we did that was the, the numbers at that time, we had to do, we had to come up with some kind of decision. We had, that was the numbers that we came up with. But that's not saying that it has to stay. And if the numbers does not require that, and you can move Birch River back into Birch District and Cherry back into Cherry District, I would highly recommend that. And I just got the tell-in of her speech about dividing the county. That would, county, bring county together, and I think that's what we need. We all, we all know that. And, but that's one reason I wanted to say was, at that time, the numbers, we had to do that because of the numbers to make it balance out. But it's my understanding, now, and I haven't looked at anything, but it's my understanding that that's not the case now, that you can move Birch River back into Birch District and Cherry into Cherry. And that is the original place where it, where it was. And I strongly recommend that you do that.
Thank you.
And moved to Richwood in 81 to teach over here. And with what I've seen of this division, I think we need to move Birch River back to Birch River, and I think it would be the best thing for our county. My wife and I both are retired teachers from Richwood, and I'd like to see the city be all together. I think it would be advantageous to us. Sure appreciate all you gentlemen do. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, guys. Thank you for what you all do for the county, and our side of the county too. We'd like it if you had been here all my life. I know all of you, but the gentleman at the end there, I think he's got my buddy's job, Jenks. He doesn't even know Jenny. But you all think about this. I was looking at it, I think you got it more divided equally at the bottom there. And we'd appreciate you putting, I would, putting your vote in for that, whatever you got to do. If you send Kristen's card up, don't forget mine's 185, every time. Try to drop a little green stuff in, if you don't care, okay? And just keep up the good work. If I need to come over and you'll be elected board of education, I'll remember, jump your ass. You do a good job, I give you praise. So thank you for coming up here tonight, meeting with the people, and going out the rest, throughout the county to see these people. That's why we pay a kid big money, do that. So we do appreciate it. See what you can get done there, ladies. I hate to see, I hate to see anything going on like this, but it's got to go, it's got to go. So see if you can, see what you can do with it. Okay? I guess that's it. Y'all go back to sleep now. We appreciate it. Thank you all for coming.
Thank you, sir.